Good morning. It's 10 o'clock, so if folks can grab a seat. Good morning. It is Monday, September 18th. It is 10:00 a.m. and this is the City Council regularly scheduled work session. I'm Mayor Barbara Bynum. Our work sessions are when council spends a lot of time going over things that will be on upcoming agendas. It's our time to talk to and ask questions of our staff about those items. There is no formal action taken at work sessions. We're not going to vote on anything and therefore we don't do a lot of public comment during our work sessions. It's mostly a time for us to get work done. And the first work session each month, we are so excited because it's an opportunity for council to meet our new city employees who are probably in all day, all week, onboarding with the Human Resources Department. So I will turn it over to our HR Director, Terry Wilcox, and she'll introduce some new staff members to us.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. It is my distinct pleasure today to introduce our newest employees, starting with Jackie Roman, who is not here. We'll have to introduce her next month. She is our new HR analyst, but was unable to attend today. So we'll turn it over to Jim Shide.
Good morning, Council. So we have several new employees to introduce today, which is really exciting from a few different departments here. So I'll start off, and then Dave Breeze, our utility manager, is not here this week, so Tyler Good will be introducing employees coming to the department. So I'll start off with Dino Scott. He's in our Parks Division. He's been a seasonal with us for a while, but now started on full-time. So I'll let him tell you more about it.
Hi, I'm Dino. I started last July seasonally, and then I only had January and February off, and then I came back in March. And I started full-time about a month and a half ago.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thanks, Dino. And one more from our Streets Department, also was a seasonal with us, is Ashley. She gets started as a seasonal, is now coming on full-time. And both of these are filling the last open position in both Parks and Streets, which is really exciting. We say we are fully staffed in both positions. So thank you, and I have to tell everybody about yourself.
Good morning. A little bit about myself. I was born and raised here in Montrose. Love hiking, camping, all that stuff, especially hiking with my dog, just using what we have in this wonderful community. So glad to be here and glad to be part of the team.
Great, welcome.
All right, and I'll hand it over to Tyler and one or two of his employees.
Good morning, Council. We've got Nick Carmona here with the Utilities Department. He is on the Tuesday to Friday crew, as it were, and I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Good morning. My name is Nicholas Carmona. I am originally from California, the Bay Area, small farm and ranching town. Started a lot in underground utilities back home under my father's supervision. Moved on a culinary and on my way in Montrose, just driving through my life. And we had a vacuum net, and we're trying to build our homestead. And we enjoy a lot. Thank you.
Great, welcome.
And I'm going to step in for hiring as well. So Carl is a wastewater treatment plant, new hire. You are an operator, right? Yes. I'd like to tell you a little bit about himself.
Hi, I'm Earl Snickoff. I've actually lived on the Western Slope since about 1980. Grew up all around country, traveling around, mostly California, Arizona, New Mexico. But we came to Delta when I was 17 years old, and I've been here mostly that whole time. Did go back to Seattle for a while. But I've been, I've lived in Nukla, Merita, lived in Montrose in the early 2000s, and then, well, heads are over with after divorce. And so my daughter's still here. I have another daughter, Grand Junction. I'll be kind of living back and forth between both Montrose and Grand Junction. I came back here when I got into wastewater. I moved out to Fort Collins and worked in Wellington and in Greeley. But now I'm married. My wife is in Grand Junction. My daughter's here, so I'm back. And I'm really happy to be back in Montrose.
Welcome.
Good morning, City Council. And the Finance Department is very excited to hire Annabelle Diaz. She actually fills the last open position in Finance, and we're going to keep her for a while. So I will turn it over to her for a little intro.
Good morning, Council. My name is Annabelle Diaz. Before getting hired here, I was working for a nonprofit, non-resident local advocacy group called Club 20. I'm sure some of you might know of the organization. And then I got my degree in conjunction in marketing and international business. So I was raised in Montrose up until 18, when I moved to Grand Junction. For my free time, I like to go to the gym. I like to weight lift. I do have a twin sister who looks just like me. Her name is Marybel. So if you ever see her in town, which might happen a few times, go ahead and say hi, but don't be offended if she doesn't know you. Sorry, in advance.
That's great, welcome.
Good morning, Council. I'm sure you're all aware, we've been operating with an extremely minimal municipal court staff this summer. So we are extremely happy to welcome Jody Morland to the staff as municipal clerk. She's a brand of the role, and she's an excellent fit with our team. So we are thrilled she's here. I'll let her introduce herself.
Good morning, Council. I'm Jody Morland. I was born and raised in Delta, so I didn't move too far away. Most of my family's still in the Delta area. I actually did daycare up until I was able to go to school. And then I started in retail, worked my way up, and then got into banking in 2014, and was looking for something challenging. So here I am. In my free time, I like to spend time with my boys. I've got four boys, a grand baby and another grand baby on the way. So I like to work out, run, hike, go to ball games, concerts, so.
Fantastic, welcome. Great, thank you very much. It's exciting to see so many new employees coming on. Sounds like you guys are great. And we really, on behalf of all City Council, we think the city is a fun place to work and be, and we welcome you to the team. Thanks so much. And now you can go back for your matron. We've got a couple items this morning for discussion, and the first one on the agenda is Osprey addition annexation, and Planner William Reese is going to tell us about that.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. The Osprey addition is a proposed annexation in which the city is acting as a partner with the current property owners. Scott Murphy has also been heavily involved in the process. So first of all, here's the proposed schedule. We do plan to bring the resolution before you on October 3rd, and the official hearing date, we are planning for November 7th. Between then, we'll take the proposed zoning to the Planning Commission on October 11th, and we'll wrap this up by November 14th, if all goes well. The annexation is approximately 9.53 acres in size, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary and the city's sewer service area and water service area. The area is urbanizing, and the entire perimeter is contiguous to existing city limits, making this an enclave. The surrounding area is zoned B2 Highway Commercial District, R2 Low Density District, R3A Medium High Density District, and R4 High Density District. The proposed zoning here is P Public District, R4 High Density District, and R3A Medium High Density District, which brings up the obvious question of split zoning. As a general rule, split zoning is a bad practice, and in planning, we do want to avoid it when we can. There are some exceptions. This is one of them. We are also working on a minor subdivision for this property, which would follow along the proposed zoning lines exactly. If the timing all goes right, the minor subdivision will be ready at the same time as the annexation is finalized, and we would record it right after. So while this would technically be split zoned if approved as presented, it would only be split zoned for a few minutes, maybe a day at the most. The minor subdivision would be recorded right after, and that would fix that problem. This is just north of the intersection of Woodgate Road and East Oak Grove Road, and the proposed roundabout would be at the southwest corner of this map. The part that would be zoned R3A is just the part of the Oak Grove right-of-way that, for some reason, a sliver of road was never annexed, and the R3A matches the rest of the right-of-way. As for the actual property, the westerly 5.1 acres were proposing to be zoned P Public District, and the easterly 4.26 acres would be zoned R4. The P District is intended to provide for uses and services of a public, nonprofit, or charitable nature. In this instance, All Points Transit would be located in this area, as Scott has previously discussed. And then the R4 zoning is intended to provide for high-density, multiple-family residences, and to allow variety in housing types. This is the annexation plat itself, which just shows the exact legal description of the property to be annexed, as well as the contiguity to existing city limits, which is 100% for this property. Also note the little sliver of right-of-way down at the bottom. That would be annexed as well. According to a comprehensive plan, in the future land use chapter, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, which provides primarily for single-family homes, as well as attached residential units, such as duplexes or groups of townhomes. The property is also within Growth Area 1, which represents some of the most cost-effective areas for the city to grow. These properties mostly consist of enclaves entirely surrounded by city and represent some of the best infill annexations and projects available. Given the cost-effectiveness of the development, proximity to infrastructure, and proximity to public transportation options, we do think that the high-density proposal is appropriate for this property. And so in summary, the area is urbanizing and meets the contiguity requirements as required by the state. An annexation agreement has been signed by the applicant. This is just under 10 acres, so a formal annexation impact report is not required. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I'm sure Scott would be happy to discuss this as well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Could you expound on that, the split zone, and for the short time? I didn't quite understand that.
Yep. So the annexation, as long as the timeline matches up with what we're hoping to do, we would prepare a minor subdivision plat at the same time as the annexation is going through. And so the minor subdivision would be recorded immediately after the annexation is finalized. And so while the property would technically be split zoned, it would only theoretically be split zoned for a few minutes. Minor subdivision would be recorded immediately after. Since the property is currently in the county, we can't technically record a minor subdivision plat until it is officially within city limits. And so the split zoning, while it would technically be split zoned, this kind of saves some of the timelines that we wouldn't have to record an annexation, have it all be zoned in one zoning district, then record a minor subdivision plat, then come back for you for a rezon application.
Just to clarify this, zoning, people listening may not know.
So split zoning is when you have one property and different parts of the property are zoned in different zoning districts. It's not illegal, but it's generally a bad practice in most cases. Like I said, there are some exceptions. We feel that this is one of those exceptions, and we think it's appropriate here. As mentioned, this would be subdivided right after, so it wouldn't be split zoned for longer than maybe a day at the most.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any additional questions? Okay, we'll see this at an upcoming council meeting, and we'll take formal action, and public comment will be received at that time. Next is item B, Commercial Kitchen Grant Application for Toasty, all-day eatery. And I'll turn this over to our City Manager, Bill Bell.
I am acting on behalf of Anthony Russo, who would normally do this presentation, but he is out at the moment. We have applicants with us for both of these projects. We have this one and the one following. Both are commercial kitchen projects. As a general summary of our program, we started several years ago through the DART program, part of our Main Street program. We knew that we needed more restaurants, more nightlife, more breweries, distilleries, those types of things for the new people moving into our community, especially younger people moving into our community, wanting them to stay here. We had to be able to provide options. So we have had several of these projects come before City Council over the last several years. This one, both of these have been in the works for months, and they're just now ready to come before the council for consideration. This one, if it's okay, Madam Mayor, can we invite the Freysmiths up?
Yeah, absolutely.
We have Phil and Melanie Freysmith, and we also have the Dragu's with us today as the property owners. But I think it would be really good for the Freysmiths to talk to you about their business plan and that kind of thing for their restaurant.
Yeah, if Bill scoots over and sits next to Ben, then our guests can sit at this end of the table. Okay, or sit there. That works.
This is Miguel Lopez, my son-in-law.
Good morning. So we're going to make sure that you get mic, so that we can hear you at the table. But because this is all recorded, it only picks it up if you speak into the mic. So go ahead and introduce yourselves to us.
I'm Phil Freysmith.
And I'm Miguel Lopez.
Miguel, I think if you can use that mic, then can you make sure it's on? And you need to be just a couple inches away. There you go. Okay, welcome. So are they going to present? You're going to present? What are we doing, Bill?
Thank you. We can just have you talk about your business plan and strategy and what you're looking to do, and then I can talk about finances and the program.
Okay. So tell us about your business and the plan.
Yeah. I think, so we're looking to add a all-day eatery. Right off the bat, we're looking to start out with breakfast and lunch, mainly, you know, serving something different as far as the menu goes for breakfast, a little different for lunch as well, anywhere from chili killeys to breakfast waffles with ice cream. Really don't want to get into too much of the detail of our breakfast menu. We're really looking to bring in more job opportunities as well with this breakfast restaurant. We're looking anywhere from 18 to 22 staff members. That includes kitchen staff, as well as a front of the floor staff as well, so.
We have the address in front of us, but for everyone who maybe doesn't have a packet, can you describe the location?
Our location over at Colorado Door? Yeah. I think we are looking to move in right next door to Sofia de, or Tornado de Sofia. It would be the address. Let me pull that up.
It's 1341 Mayfly Drive.
Thank you.
But just describing it is more useful, usually, so.
You want me to describe the inside, the outside? How would you like for me to describe that?
I think just telling us that it's right next to Tornado is in the Colorado Door project. I think that's probably.
Yeah, and walkable from the new hotel that'll be opening in just a couple months. So that kind of sets the state, I think. Thanks.
Anything else you guys would like me to clarify as far as detail with the business plan?
What our plan is that we're going to open the breakfast place to serve that area because there's not really much out there. And then in three to six months, we'd like to open in the evenings and offer some sort of cocktails similar to Felonies, but not felonies. You know what I mean? If you're familiar with felonies. And then light foods as well, just in the evenings. What we're thinking is we'll open till 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, close, and then open up from 5:00 or 6:00 again for the evening.
Six days a week, I would assume?
Seven.
Seven days a week.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Breakfast lunchtime would be anywhere from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Great. I think. Does Council have any other questions, just about the general business and what they're looking at? Okay, so I think that part covers it.
Now, I have a question for Mr. Bell. In prior iterations of our program for the commercial kitchen grants, is that we specified it was for hardscape, basically, things that would not be moved, things that could not go away with the business owner, that would be permanent installations. Now, on here, I'm saying a lot of things like heat lamps and fryers and so on like that. Is that changed in our program, that we are now authorizing? I'm having trouble with English today. Authorizing a more broad scope?
So we have had conversations with Phil about that, and David Dragu talking about what's built into the unit and what would remain with the area. So if you look at the sheet that's included in the packet, it has total project costs of the 970, 173, total kitchen costs at the 179, 08249. And then Anthony, working with them, actually removed a few thousand dollars of just tabletop items. They're smaller in nature and easily would just be able to walk away. And so the total request for the program is the 176,28346. So we still want to meet that intent of everything stays with the building. And in their application and in the write-up that's in the packet, it talks about all of these things staying with the building. The actual building owner on the fixed building are the Dragu's, and they're firm. And so Phil and his team would be going in just like the Tornado de Sofia as a tenant. But the idea is that even if they were to leave in a few years, the items stay behind in the unit, and so it's a viable restaurant unit for a long time to serve the community. So we haven't changed philosophies. That's why it's a reduced number on the sheet. There are a few items on there, like heat lamps, but I think Anthony brought some of those things to Phil's attention, and Phil made a good argument that he's not going to just go in and take out a bunch of things because it would require a lot of work to do that, right?
And the end goal is to purchase the building anyway. If it comes up for the condo, you know, the goal is to purchase the building. So hopefully, we're not going to be taking anything out of there for a long time.
Yeah. The reason that we have that policy in place is because if we utilize city money to give to a business, we're trying to, as Mr. Bell mentioned, build up commercial kitchens, increase the ability of our community to go out and enjoy a nice dinner. But if the business unfortunately failed, and people loaded up the truck and moved to Beverly, they would take our money with them, and we want to avoid that.
Do you want to talk about your other local restaurants?
Horse Line.
Just all of your successes have been in the community?
Yeah, just letting people know that you're not a fly-by-night. We started Horse Line 2009, myself, my wife, and Nigel Askew. We started with $20,000 with a little brewery out east of town. We were in the front of a storage unit, just the office space, 1,000 square feet. 2010, we moved to our current location at 846 East Main. We've just been building and building. We bought the building in 2014. 2016, me and my wife bought out Nigel. And this year, we will exceed $3 million in sales just at that location. We help with the community. We donate a lot of money to the community, support the high school, support anyone that comes to, well, not anyone, but most people. We help them out. Spends in golf tournaments, whatever. So we do as much as we can. My philosophy is, give the community, community will give back. And that's working out pretty well so far.
And as I-
And that will continue with Toasty, I mean, the same philosophy.
You do have other locations besides the-
Yes, I do. Yep.
Bill, can you talk about, okay, let me preface this. So I understand the benefit of bringing in more restaurants. It's something we hear about. The city should make there be more restaurants. Well, we can't just make there be more restaurants. One of the, we can't, other than our golf course, we don't, we're not in the business of operating restaurants. But when someone wants to operate a restaurant, and the city can help financially make that happen, then that's the way we can make there be more restaurants in town. Can't, so in that respect, I feel like I'm being responsive to what I hear is the city should make there be more restaurants. However, it is a financial investment of tax dollars. So can you talk a little bit about the return on investment in terms of sales tax and restaurant excise tax that will come back to the city by making this project happen? Because some people say, well, I don't really care if there's more restaurants. I just want to know if this is a good investment of my tax dollars.
Yeah, and we tried to, we do that on every project at the city and out in the URA. This one's a unique one because it's located within the Mura area. But the commercial kitchen program is a city program, so it's not running through the URA Board as a URA incentive and directly to City Council. On the one-page information sheet where it highlights all of the items that would be purchased, on the bottom there, it talks about, based on their gross sale projections for five years, the sales tax and the restaurant excise tax, so a total of 3.8% of those, would generate $188,683 over a five-year period. So whenever we do these projects as an investment, we look at how long would it take to pay back the community for that investment? And in this case, it's about that five-year mark for their particular business. And you'll see the same on the upcoming project on a different timeframe of three years. So we do that a little different when we come before City Council on these types of programs than we would at the URA Board later this week when we're talking about projects, because there we have property taxes and we have some other things, and TIF incentives, that we don't really focus on here, the city side of things. So I think it's important to know, for the $176,000 approximate investment, in about five years, we would get paid back for the community into the city's revenue stream. And then we also want to talk about the Dragu's contribution as well, and that's on here. So current contributions, it breaks down, the Freysmith contribution of 893,117. The long name there is the Dragu LLC, $77,056 as owner contribution to the fixing up the unit to make it viable for the restaurant. And then ours is the additional dollars.
So the tenant is paying in to finish up the space, the landlord is paying in to finish up the space, and this is a proposal for the city to also pay in to finish out the space to turn it into a viable, successful restaurant.
Correct.
I'm going to dive off a little bit, but about talking about this program, that one of the other aspects of this is public safety, health, and welfare, making sure that our commercial kitchens are up to good code. And so that we're making sure that businesses coming in aren't converting an old house into a restaurant with kind of patchwork equipment. So we're trying to make sure that we're upgrading those facilities to make them safe.
Yeah, safety and long-term viability. Just to make sure that we build quality product that anyone can use moving forward.
I want to go back to the sales tax and the restaurant excise tax. Would those revenues go to the city's general fund, or has the city pledged sales and excise tax in the URA to go into the URA repayment?
Because this one is located in the Mura boundaries, that would go into the Mura collections.
Okay.
Yeah, which is a, it's interesting, I always have to describe it. The city loaned the money to the URA, so any money's going into the URA benefits the city because we can get paid back for our original investment.
Thanks.
By 2042, is the goal, yeah. Probably, yeah.
I'll be eligible to run for council again. Council, are there other questions that you have, either about this particular project, about the kitchen grant program that the city runs, or about the expected revenue from sales and excise tax?
When is your expected opening?
We're looking to open up in the beginning of the year, if approved. It's anywhere from mid to 12 weeks for construction. So hopefully, second, third week of January will be ready to go.
I guess the only question I would have would be for Bill. That is, Bill, based on other projects of a similar nature that has been approved by this council, is this one consistent with all the other projects, in your opinion, that we've approved?
Yeah, it is. And we had actually had a discussion briefly with council. I think it might have been in our spring big-picture budget discussion about the future of the commercial kitchen program. And at that time, we talked about ones that were already in the works. These are some of the ones that are already in the works. We'll want to have that discussion maybe this spring about the long term. Do we have enough restaurants, basically, or do we want this program to keep going? But just want to make it clear that these ones are already in the pipeline, as we discussed. And then one thing I didn't mention that makes it consistent as well, is that we will pay the contractor directly for the work. So the money doesn't go to the owners or the landlords. It goes directly to the contractors doing the work to build out the restaurant.
I think another aspect of discussion that would be good to have is whether or not existing restaurants have the opportunity to upgrade equipment that is failing or out of date.
Yeah, we haven't had that come before us very often. In the past, when we did actually an expansion at Horse Fly, more on your brewery side of things, I think, years ago, and some other local restaurants have come through our city's downtown Main Street loan program, or kind of like our facade grant program. We have the small business revolving loan program, and so we handle things that we usually for the rehabilitation or replacement of a furnace kind of thing for a restaurant. We haven't had too many come to us for a full rebuild or anything, but they would definitely be eligible.
Good question, and that is, who and how are we going to keep track of the equipment that belongs to the city and is in that restaurant, so that it does stay? Should it be so successful that they buy another building somewhere in Montrose, and they move Toasty's to a different location? How can we ensure that that, who's going to keep track of that?
It's a really good question. So the built-in units become the property of the building owner, not the city.
Okay.
So we don't put a lien on the equipment.
Okay.
We can. That is an option available. The city, when we talked about it in the past, it's a lot of work to do that, honestly, and to track it and to put liens on things. And past legal counsel had told us that it's really hard to track those anyway, or get money back on those. So we have, on occasion, if people were part of our different programs and they failed to pay taxes, or they didn't pay their loan payments back, if we were doing a loan, we would go and send them to collections. But that is about as far as we've gone. We haven't put a lien on property.
Okay.
So it does become the owner of the building's property. There is some good faith.
Okay, so there's some good faith with the landlord that should, should the managers of the restaurant, this is so successful, you guys buy a different building in Montrose and you move your restaurant, the landlord would remind them, in the same way a landlord wouldn't let someone take a toilet, they're going to say, this stuff stays, this is, belongs to the building. And, okay.
With the recent remodel at the airport, the day we moved in, I took a video of the kitchen. So I know it's mine and what's theirs. So I can, you know, I'll have that forever. So they go back, well, this was there, that was there. No, it wasn't. Here's the video from the day. It's date stamped. This is what was there the day we moved in.
Can you, when you take that video of Toasty's, will you make sure the city has a copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you. How is it going at the airport, by the way?
Very good.
Congratulations. Council, any additional questions? Before we'll see this at an upcoming meeting, at which point, we would take public comment, have some similar discussion, refer back to the work session when we asked all the good questions. Any other questions for this morning? Everyone, it looks like he might be thinking of one. Everyone else has shook me off. Okay.
And I may have some questions at the council meeting, but right now, I'm still trying to figure out some stuff.
Okay, well, and that is why we talk about it once, and then staff and the applicant will be available until we vote on it. So if you do have, you know, you think of something later, staff and the applicant are always available to answer more questions or think of other things before we vote on it. Okay? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is also a commercial grant application, and this is for Eatery North. So we asked them to come forward.
Thank you.
Make sure you have a microphone. Make sure it's on. And please introduce yourselves to council.
So my name is Katie Graves. My husband's-
Spencer Graves.
We have been in and out of the areas for 20 years now. Early 2000s in Telluride. Spencer's been a chef at the, quite a few establishments throughout Telluride. Already started the new Sheridan Chop House. Some of the recipes you still see there are still his. We moved away for about eight years, moving back to Ridgeway, I would say, 2013. 2014, we started our business out of a 1966 Airstream. We parked it in Ridgeway, not really knowing what we were doing, how we were doing it. At that time, Ridgeway really was nothing. So we took a chance. It was really beautifully well-received. Three years into that, we moved into 520 Sherman Street and have been currently owning and operating that business. We do not own the real estate, but we are in very good relations with the owner. We have another five, possibly 10-year lease at our current location in Ridgeway. The name of the restaurant in Ridgeway is Eatery 66. Eatery North comes from both Compass and from the North Street address. So our plan for Montrose, oh, following up further, we, after living in Ridgeway for eight years, we currently live here in Montrose. Our kids are at schools here in Montrose. And we've been hiding a little bit because we were very exposed for a long time in Ridgeway, and it feels really great to kind of be in our new place. But we've always really kind of thought that we could bring something to Montrose in the same element that we have brought something to Ridgeway. One of our, one of our top reasons of doing something is we run what we call a farm-to-trailer, because hence a little play on the name, but most of our food is supplied locally. So all of our beef and pork come from Montrose, actually. So to generalize, that we're really trying to produce something that is coherent and also using a circular economy that's actually giving back and showing how important it is. We have quite a good reputation, I would say, as far as our quality of food. And I think it's really important that people understand that the quality of food is directly influenced by- by your product. And sourcing our products locally is something that is incredibly important to us, so we'd like to keep that going, if not grow that further. We're working out with a local farm out of Delta for produce, Happy Hogs for our pork, and we use Downs Ranch for our beef. Also have many other, so hopefully can continue to expand that and really help influence how important it is to kind of create that, again, circular economy for restaurants, also helping on the other side of things. So the, the proposal here is a little bit in the works, so you probably have some questions for us. The building is not owned, it was bought, it's not owned by us, it was bought by an investor out of California. He's actually never even been to Montrose, but he did recently fix up the new sunglass shop, the, where, and the tattoo parlor, so that looks really nice. And his plan, hopefully, if all goes well with this, would be to sell us the actual building, so we would become the owners of the building as well.
Let's see, maybe tell us a little bit about the plan for this restaurant, I know it's in here, but just so everyone can be part of it.
Please.
Like you heard the previous questions, when are you gonna be open, and where are you again? I know that address is here, but if you could just describe for anyone listening where you are.
Sure. It's kind of a unique spot, which is something that we kind of like, but it's going to be kind of off the beaten path. It's actually behind the Ace, so it's on North First Street, in more of a residential area, I would say. One block off of Main, one block off of Cascade, or two blocks off of Cascade, but in the vicinity of the downtown area. There is the public parking but half a block away, which is really important to us. I have in my phone to make sure I show up for the DOT meeting on October 3rd, but just to kind of keep it a walking kind of space, trying to keep the residents happy in that area. It's the old radio station building, so pretty unique, kind of a mid-century modern look. We're trying to kind of keep that. Our theme is trying to keep this like classic new vibe, so it's classic in the sense that there's this kind of old-school farmy 1950s thing going on, but as well, kind of bringing a new elevation to Montrose dining scene. The restaurant itself could serve inside about 90, if we extend to the outside area, that would add another 25 seats. It's, I would say, something that might take a moment to pick up on, but I do feel like with our general name and being in the area and that excitement, I think people would look for us, I would say. Questions more about the way? It's, it's pretty, needs a lot of work right now, it's in its bare bone stages, so it's going to need a full renovation in order to make this happen. There's no kitchen inside currently. With that said, it's not bad, it's pretty unique and pretty interesting.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions so far on the location, or what kind of a restaurant they would like to open?
Just, when, when is your anticipated opening date?
I would say, um, early next year, you know, February, March, if we can get things going. We have a lot more construction to be done than, I would say, pushing closer to 12 weeks of construction, so that would push us into January plus. So we'd like to do it before summer, just because our summer in Ridgeway tends to get a little busy, so we like to have things going before that.
So I'm assuming you heard all of our questions and comments about equipment staying in the building and all of that, and so you kind of understand our position on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
How is that gonna work if you guys, you currently aren't the landlord, and I understand you'd like to buy the building, but because really what we're doing is buying equipment for the landlord, and they're not here, and you said they'd never been to Montrose, and I don't know if you're the better person to answer this, or Mr. Bell's the better person to answer this, but does the landlord understand how this is gonna work? Because that's really important.
Yes, he's been included in all of this, so he's definitely in the understanding of all of how this is gonna work. I think that's why it's kind of flipped on how this goes. Normally, you have it more in this chronological order, this is more, we, if we can gather this money from council, then we can take that and apply it towards buying the property from him. Without money, we're, we would be more than we'd want to start in, so I guess that's where that kind of flips.
Also included in the packet's a letter from the owner, because he couldn't be here with us. He talked about his project over with the Montrose Music Building and the conversion of that property to make it something really nice, and he's hoping to do the same with this one. And then there's also a letter of recommendation from Regent Penn, who did the financial analysis of their restaurant history, as well as his conversations with the owner, and everything seems to match up, and so we're very comfortable moving forward. But we have had those discussions with the owner of the building.
And since you've got the mic, go, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, on our prior application, we saw the revenue basis of a five-year projection, and this is a three-year projection, and it shows a, was $85,467. What, on our five-year projection, which we used on the last one, which shows the full repayment, what was our full repayment time on this one?
We were only given a three-year projection on this particular one. That's why we calculated it on three years, we only had three years of revenues to work with. And I don't know if you want to speak to, Anthony had those discussions with you, I think it was just the unknown of those next two years.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, we're kind of in, I was just making projections on what we're doing from Ridgeway, and I would say, what we're hoping, actually, is I was really playing on the very, very low end of those projections, what I'd like to see is probably double that, realistically. I mean, population-wise, just in and of itself, it doesn't really compare to Ridgeway. So I was making those projections off of our Ridgeway numbers, where really in Ridgeway, what we have as far as economically making our business work is four months. What we would like to see here in Montrose is a more consistent movement. Yes, you probably have ebb and flow, but that's, our plan is to create something that's a little bit more consistent.
I do have a question on, on the locations, a little bit off of Main Street. Are you looking more for local traffic versus people just driving through?
I would say, I would, I would like to touch on everybody, but I think it is really important to have the local hangout spot, some, someplace to go, almost similar to what we've created in Ridgway, which is like a Cheers style, everybody knows your name, you go in, you have what, everybody knows your order, you know what, you want your honor upon honor, it is kind of more of a community gathering spot. With that said, I think it's really important for us to tap into this tourist market. I think our advertising will have to reach further than it is right now, including the airport, including 4H events, including high school events. That's where we kind of have hidden ourselves in the sand for a little bit because we haven't quite known what to do, but I think, moving forward, I think it's really important for Montrose to have a tourism sector. And I think it is important for us to create a restaurant scene in order to create more tourism. I think that does go hand in hand, like I say. There were probably three or four restaurants that really created that for Ridgway, and as you can see, and that would be ourselves, tabbed on our provisions, we created this place that people stopped, and nobody stopped in Ridgway 10 years ago, you just kept driving. It was totally different. You know, I mean, granted, they made the highway, we were there, we stuck through it when they were shut, you know, we were right there with the Airstream, and we had to put through the sidewalk right through and all of that, and I think it's really nice to see how influenced tourism can be on a city and its growth. I, I, the idea of having the local downtown hotel also in collaboration with this, it's walking distance, I would say, for the new hotel going in, so.
Do you see it, excuse me, being any kind of a handicap parking wise? I mean, our main parking's gonna be half a block away, and there's kind of limited parking street wise down there, do you see any concerns with that?
Yeah, I, that's where I would have to approach the city and the, the DOT meeting and see, because that is something that is important to me. How are we gonna get those who are elderly or disabled to be able to come to the restaurant? And secondly, how are we also going to encourage people to walk to the restaurant? So I think signage is gonna be appropriate, I think we'd have to work with CenturyLink next door and see if we can make sure that we can have some of those, you know, parking spaces available for handicap parking. Whether or not that's allowed, I don't know, but that would be something that I'd have to bring up in October at that meeting. Yeah, I agree.
So you're saying, and I'm looking at the building, the building itself doesn't have its own dedicated parking lot, is that correct?
No.
No, that's not correct, or no, they don't?
They do not.
Okay.
No parking.
So there's this, so there's some limited street parking?
It's pretty limited, I would say it's almost always full with residents in that area. So that's why it's really important that we can be able to advocate for the parking lot that is on First, and it's in between, I'd say, Park and, right?
And Compaugh.
And Compaugh, yeah, exactly, mm-hmm.
Okay, so William, maybe this is why you're at the table, but is this currently zoned for a restaurant, and would there be any concerns from a, the planning department's point of view for a restaurant being here? I would assume that we wouldn't be entertaining a kitchen grant if those were still concerns, but can you speak to that?
I wouldn't have any concerns, this area is zone B1, which is the downtown commercial district, that allows for restaurants, is a good location for restaurants. In theory, off-street parking for developments are not required in B1. Obviously, a developer is free to put off-street parking within B1, but generally, most commercial enterprises within the B1 zones can and do rely on street parking. And then there is also the public parking lots in the vicinity, so I wouldn't have any concerns.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I can just, for people that weren't at the last DART meeting, or the budget meeting, we planned in our budget for next year signage for our parking lots and to do a better job of wayfinding, so I think this is a good example of how DART can get involved to support local businesses and then partner with the planning team and Jim Shiden Public Works to make sure we get signage there that directs people. Maybe it's something in the lot and something along the route to get them over to the restaurant. All things that are great for DART to talk about.
Right. And can you talk a little bit how, unlike the URA, any sales tax and restaurant excise tax generated from this building, which I believe is currently empty and not generating any sales tax for the city of Montrose, would go into the city's general fund?
Yeah, because this one's not in the urban renewal authority area, everything is directly to the city, so the calculations are based on the three-year of revenue projections at the 3.8%, and that's what's generating the $85,467 over three years that would come directly back into the city. The, part of it, we, tourism and marketing uses that, and DART for downtown business development, and overall advertising, and then part of it goes straight into our general fund.
And it is currently not, this particular location, this particular building, while the city doesn't collect property taxes, this piece of land's generating absolutely no revenue to the city of Montrose as it currently stands?
I believe so, although I've never asked any of that direct question. She's nodding yes, so we are receiving no money right now from that company.
So I think that's even a more compelling argument than perhaps a remodel, is we go from zero revenue from the city to not only meeting the demands of people wanting to eat out and have more choices, and, oh, I went downtown, but that restaurant was full, so I had another option, but from strictly an, an investment point of view, there is a return on that investment for our citizens because it's their tax money. Thanks. Council, any other questions for staff or the applicant before we see this at a future council meeting, where there would be a vote and an opportunity for public input?
May I add one thing?
Sure. Unfortunately, we're probably going to be asking for more money than what is on the paper right now. Anthony did take off some things. I just would love for you guys to consider the bar revenue and the built-in of the bar, the electrical, plumbing and gas is also not on there. Our contractor has places in Florida, so he's been dealing with flooding, so we really wanted to get into this meeting right now, but we actually, that number that Anthony has pulled up, if it's possible to look at further details of the bar, actually, the build of the bar, because that is part of the restaurant, I know it's equipment, but I, I can guarantee that the bar revenue in and of itself would grate, if not more than the food at times, but that's something that's not in there, I think it is just kitchen equipment itself. And then some of the utilities, we just couldn't get in touch with our contractor enough about how to navigate gas. I don't think the gas line was in there, I think the electrical and the plumbing, he couldn't get us any of that report, so.
That sounds like it's going a little outside the scope, though, of a kitchen grant, so I'll let Bill Bell speak to that.
I hadn't heard any of that yet, but that would be a different program, so as, as Anthony gets back and you get more numbers on that, let's talk about the business revolving loan program and some of the other DART initiatives. But this one is strictly for establishment of commercial kitchens.
Okay, great, thank you very much, thanks for coming to our work session this morning.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be, oh, review of proposed charter revisions with 55-minute mark, let's take a quick break, so anyone who needs to use a restroom or get more coffee before we jump into the city charter revisions, which will take pretty much the remaining time of our agenda, but I think actually there's some other stuff, yeah, take a quick five-minute break, not a 15-minute break, like a five-minute break. Okay, go.
About a six-minute, you said a five-minute?
Just do your best.
She's looking at you.
Just do your best, we got a lot more stuff to do.
She had to go to somewhere, right? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. Hey, everything okay there? Nothing? Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Okay, okay. You need to make a, make a note of that, please? For some reason, I'm not getting my email, I don't think, on my phone, and I sent you an email, and it said, please send me a test email, did you not receive that? Can't, thank you so much. Okay, it was raining, we wanted to have a conversation? Okay. Okay, can you then, do you pull up my emails from this morning and see what I've gotten? Because I'm, for some reason, I'm not getting them on the phone. Yeah, 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 because I'm, I'm kind of in a hurry, about another three minutes before they cut me off. Sounds good, thanks. I am. White dog, capital B.
Okay, if you're listening to the recording, I'm just gonna remind folks where we are. This is our regularly scheduled city council work session, where we go over items that'll be on upcoming agendas for public comment and votes, but this work session adjusts for discussing, and it gives staff and council a time to, to ask questions back and forth and get all the information that we need. And we have some discussion items on our agenda this morning, and we're on the last of those, and it is a review of proposed charter revisions, and you'll see in your packet that you, you got some background information on this, I'm gonna pull that up. City council asked our city legal team to look at some updates- But this work session adjusts for discussing, and it gives staff and council a time to ask questions back and forth and get all the information that we need. And we have some discussion items on our agenda this morning, and we're on the last of those. And it is a review of proposed charter revisions. And you'll see in your packet that you got some background information on this. I'm going to pull that up. City council asked our city legal team to look at some updates to our city charter. Any updates to our charter would need to be voted on by the residents of Montrose. And so what we're talking about this morning is suggestions that came out of the Charter Review Committee that council should consider proposing to the voters as changes to the charter. So with that, I will turn it over to Ben Morris, our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought the committee did an excellent job of working through this. It's a nice example of collaboration among council and staff. What you have here are recommendations for updates and amendments to the charter to be in keeping with changes in the times, in the law, and best practices. I have a document on the screen that should match the red-line version of the charter sections that were recommended be changed that you'll find in your packets. And I plan to just go through that. It's in chronological order as pulled from the charter. It is not the entire charter. That would have been a lot longer, and I wanted to boil it down to just the stuff we're here to talk about. So with that in mind, it's okay, I'll just dive in?
Yeah, I think dive in, and then maybe let's stop after sections to see if council has any questions or comments. I think there's two different things we want to be thinking about, council. First off, if we have specific questions about what the city attorney is saying, and then secondly, is this something we want to ask voters to change? And those are kind of the two things that we want to talk about this morning. If we need to, the timeline, if we need to, we could talk about it more at another work session. So the timeline, to put this in front of voters, they would be voting on updating the charter in the April election of 2024, very similar to what voters did in April of 2014. So the city presented a ballot item that said, should these changes be made to the city charter? And in 2014, the voters looked at those changes and said, yes, those changes all make sense. So as council, we're going to be eventually ending up, probably going to voters and saying, do you vote yes to make these changes to the city charter? And the changes are being made for a number of different reasons. Some of them, the old language is outdated, some of them, the language is in conflict in different parts of the charter. So the changes that are being suggested are being made for a variety of different reasons. And you'll talk about the change and why it's being made.
Sure.
Okay. And we'll take questions at each section, I think.
Sure. And I'm hoping this to be a casual back-and-forth discussion, not an hour-long monologue. So, starting here with (laugh) with section seven of Article One, qualifications for our city councilors. There's a couple of things here that we changed throughout the charter, so I'll just maybe kick it off with that. There are a number of instances of the use of the term elector and qualified elector or electors. I don't think there's a difference, and in fact, in Article 10, where a definition section is in the charter, it says they mean the same thing. So I went through and to make it consistent, I deleted the word qualified wherever I could find it. So we should just be seeing the word elector. There are a couple of instances of registered elector that I left alone. I think they were purposefully put in, but everything else is just elector, vast majority. Also, throughout the charter, I believe in 2014, those changes that were made then had changed the word he to he or she, or his or hers, that kind of thing. To use more precise legal language, I changed those pronouns to the actual title of the person or thing that we're talking about. So instead of city manager and his or his or her designee, it would now say city manager or the city manager's designee, for an example. So I thought that was a more precise way of describing these kinds of things. You'll see an example of it, first line right there in front of you in section seven. Every elector may be a candidate for the office of councillor if, it used to say he or she, it now says if such elector has resided within the city, et cetera. And it goes on. So with that in mind, I'm just going to keep on cruising here. We did eliminate the felony conviction requirement per discussions there. It's okay, I'll move to section eight.
Any questions about that so far? You can always come back, doesn't mean you can never ask another question. Okay, keep going.
Just for the recording, if you can explain what the elimination of that felony conviction sentence, why we did that, or why we're going to do that?
That's actually not something from the distant past. It was included in the 2014 amendments that were passed then. We had a more detailed discussion of this in an executive session. You can waive that privilege if you wish, but I would rather not do that on my own. So I'm going to stop there.
I would just say that is, it is a substantive change rather than a housekeeping change on a particular item.
It is a substantive change recommended by the legal department based upon changes, we'll say, in emerging law.
And we talked about it in executive session and asked that that be one of the changes we made to the charter. I think that's enough information.
I think it is. I just want to make sure that people watching the recording understand that that substantive change had a basis in law.
Yes.
And our legal advice.
Yes. Okay, section eight, this one's a lot more complicated, and you'll see a lot more colored ink here. This is the term of office section. Previously, and I can maybe relate back going a couple decades into the past for my experience with the city, there has always been some question over what the term of office of a council member can be. What is, how many terms can you paste together to make a single stay in office? Can they be a combination of the at-large and district seats? But what happens with a partial term, like if you're coming in after a council member has resigned early, some situation like that, does that count as a whole term or only part of a term when you're trying to compute the term limits? The purpose of all this colored ink here is to define all of that and make it clear. It is, I would say, more or less what we've always done, but because a lot of that was either vague or not even written down at all, what this does is to clarify it so that hopefully, let's say, different attorneys, for instance, different council members will all read it and hopefully reach the same conclusion about how long you can stay in office. As it is, I think reasonable people have read this and come to different conclusions at different times in the last 20 years, and that's bad. We want everyone to read it and know what the rules are. So that's the purpose of it. It was not to change or lengthen your terms in office, just to find exactly what you can do and what you can't.
To that extent, I will note that it does change the at-large seat from being, from that being three two-year terms to four two-year terms to be consistent with the rest of council and that this, should the voter, should we recommend this and should voters pass this in April? It would take effect then, but it wouldn't apply to me. So, for example, not only do I have no intention of seeking another two-year term, but under our current charter, I wouldn't be allowed to, and this change would be, going forward, it wouldn't affect me, for what it's worth. So anyone to think that this is my plan to stay in council another two years, it doesn't apply like that.
Sure. I think this is pretty clear. I'm going to try and avoid reading all this stuff to you guys, if that's okay. You can all read it for yourselves and ask if you have a question. But yes, basically, there's a hard eight-year limit. We do not count partial terms. That's pretty simple. I think everyone can understand that. That was the committee's decision. But other than that, it's a hard limit of eight years, no matter which seat you have or which combination of seats that you piece together, whether you start out as at-large and then go to a district seat and whatnot. You get eight years total.
With a partial term, this three years, somebody gets elected and after, say, six months, and obviously decides, oh, this is not for me, then that's a three years and six months plus, they're eight years? Is that...
That isn't counted toward the total. And so we toyed with different ways of doing this, like if it's less than half of the term, things like that, it wouldn't count, and if it was more than half of the term, it would. But we ultimately reached the conclusion that any partial term would not count.
Is that true, it wouldn't be three years?
However, they would have to run for election at the next municipal election. So if someone was appointed just six months into a term, they would have to stand for election a year and a half later. So they don't get to just sit around for three years.
So if he was elected to a four-year term, then the next election, which would be a year and a half maybe, then they would have to stand for reelection?
They would have to stand for reelection. So no appointment that the council makes can last longer than the next municipal election. Because ultimately, while council does fill vacancies so that the city can continue doing its business, ultimately, the very next opportunity for voters to have a say would give voters the say. You can't be appointed to three and a half years of council. No, it's a great question, and it's something we really want to make sure.
I'm kind of an example.
Yeah, but I'm not sorry. It's a little complicated, but you can if you want.
No. Okay.
Also, you'll notice, everyone, that we asked legal to weigh in on whether throughout the charter it needed to reference all this stuff in footnotes, and our attorney said no, that we can take all of those kind of footnote-y things out of the charter.
None of that was actually passed by the voters. That's something that you do when you're codifying a law. And so, yes, of course, it can be removed for clarity. I think it was getting a bit garbled.
Yeah.
It was trying to summarize half a century of evolution here of the charter, and I found it hard to digest.
And that's why you see all of that being removed from the charter.
Okay, with your permission, then, we'll move on to section nine, compensation. You're going to see a lot of sections like this where I'm just fixing typos, I'm replacing pronouns with titles, and that's really not a lot to talk about there. I saw shall neither increase or decrease. I think it's grammatically practicing or instead of or. And then down about three lines below that, I put an F in front of the word or to make it a four. I think that was a typo. I'm not trying to change the meaning there. I think if you read that sentence in context, it's pretty obvious it needs to be four, not or.
And just to be clear, we're not changing the compensation given to council or staff by anything that's going on here?
No. Moving to section 10. This one deals with the mayor. Here again, we're just typing in titles. And then there's one change, I think, is for clarity, where it says serving. What we're really saying is the mayor can receive service of civil process on behalf of the city as the city's representative. So it said serving, and I thought that was a little odd, and I think the committee all believed that, too. Moving on, section 11, vacancies. This has the same change regarding felonies and then the same replacement of title, naming the title everywhere possible. I got a little creative and used the word such person or that person here and there. But generally, I think that's very consistent throughout.
And we felt like 30 days was still enough time for council to fill a vacancy, and that we didn't, like, for example, like, DMEA goes with like 90 days, and we felt like council could certainly fill a vacancy within 30 days. And I've seen a lot of head nodding, so that looks good.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be a change, thank you.
Correct, not a change. Section 14, oaths. This is something that we did in a couple of different spots throughout the document. So before 2014, there was one section for oaths, and it listed a bunch of different positions in different, we'll say, branches of the city organization to include the council and city manager and administrative branch, and then the court and city attorney's office. What we did was to break those out. The language has the same meaning, and it should be identical in each of these oath sections. But now we have one that addresses the elected officials, one that addresses the administration, and then one for the court and legal department. So you'll see those later on. They're all in colored ink. This one was the original one, section 14, that we should be looking at. That, I just deleted the stuff for city manager, city attorney, et cetera, municipal judge. But they still have to have an oath, it's just dealt with separately. So we didn't delete anybody's requirement for oath. Maybe that's the best way to say it.
And the committee did have a question of whether the city clerk takes an oath. Did we get an answer to it? Does the city clerk take an oath?
We talked about whether we should include it. I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
The city clerk is not taking an oath, and we didn't add it. Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Article two, council procedure. We talked quite a bit about changes in technology and how do we get the word out about meetings and when and where they're held. In this particular section, I put a line in, or really a clause, that says we would post, as time permits, on a public website of the city. And then I said, in conformity with Colorado Open Meetings Law, and cited to the statute. The idea there is that we would have to post our meetings as required by Colorado law. Some things we can exempt ourselves from under our home rule authority, but notice of meetings and the Open Meetings Law is not one of those things. So it's because we're subject to it, I thought I would just say that in the charter.
I want to say that I'm opposed to that striking out in newspaper and which other official city publications are made, as not everyone is computer savvy, and I can talk from my own experience, getting on the city website is not always the easiest for some people. And I would myself prefer that, to give the people the opportunity to see what's happening in the council as well as the media. I think we should leave that in there. I don't believe the cost is that much that it would make any sense, at least to me, to just cancel it out.
I think in our discussion, what it was, was that it doesn't preclude us from putting it in the newspaper, and we still intend to, but by removing it from the charter, because what happens if the newspaper folds?
Well, there's other publications in town.
They're all online, though, so...
Well, I think what Jay is saying, Ed, is that we will continue to publish it in the newspaper, but our charter, but our charter wouldn't require it. So we, as a council, would decide, hey, we reach people that way, it makes sense. But should it, in the future, not make sense? For example, the newspaper folds, or the newspaper goes to a once a week, or it gives us the option without it being in the charter. The charter, if something's in the charter, it's very hard to change. It requires a vote of the people, it requires a public process. So you're right, we should put it in the newspaper, but should our charter require that?
Yes, I think it should. That's just my opinion.
Well, I have, I'm not sure I totally agree with that, Ed, but I think we have two problems. I know a number of people who take a newspaper, but it's a paper from Grand Junction, they do not take the local newspaper. And I think that we're putting it in a location that does make it available to everyone. It may make it a little more difficult. But I don't see that in today's environment. I think we have to keep moving forward with technology and maintain as close contact with the bulk of the people that we can.
And so your recommendation would be what? I'm not sure I follow what ultimately you think.
I like what we have here.
When you say what we have here, the recommendation to remove it or to keep it?
I think the recommendation to remove it. I have no problem with putting it online.
With the knowledge that we do still fully intend to publish all of our information in whatever media we have available to us.
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say our other media are available to us. I'd like to see that in there. That's just, I think it's right that we serve all the community, not just the computer literate ones.
Okay, so let's put a pin in this particular item as being something council doesn't feel unanimous about, and keep going. I think we clarified, I think in the past, there's been some questions about what kind of a quorum is required to go into executive session. And I think that it looks to me like you clarified that here, Ben. Is that what the green edits are?
Yes, and it may not be green for all of you, for me, they're red, but...
Or blue.
They may be any color of the rainbow.
I got both, I got green and blue and all sorts of stuff.
But yes, that's why I was saying colored ink, because I can't tell you what color it is on your screen. So entering into executive session requires three out of five of you to vote in the affirmative. And that was, I think, a good clarification so that everyone knows. It's not only just...
Wait, it isn't necessarily three out of five. What if only three people are present for meeting, and we want to enter into executive session? That's where we've had, I think, a question in the past.
Okay. So it says, "A majority of all the members, meaning of the city council, shall constitute a quorum to do business and enter executive session."
So a majority of all councillors would be three. So you would need three...
Oh, for a quorum, and then also to enter executives. I'm sorry. I told you wrong. You've called me out.
Well, I'm just, still now, I'm more confused, honestly. And I don't know if it's because you told me wrong or because it's written. So let's say we had a regular city council meeting with three members present. That's a quorum. We can conduct city business with three people present.
Right.
We can vote on items they would pass if the vote was two to one or three to zero. If there were three people present, and those three councillors, and someone made a motion to go into an executive session, it was seconded, can they go into an executive session with two yes votes? And can they go into an executive session with three yes votes? Or can they not go into executive, well, three would be yes. Can they go into an executive session if the vote is two to one and three people are present? That's my question.
I think your question is excellent. When I read this the first time, I was going to tell you, you had to have three votes in the affirmative to go into an executive session. I then read it again at your urging and see that, oh, no, you just have to have a quorum of three to do business and enter executive session. But then what does that mean to enter executive session? Do you have to have that vote, or is it just the quorum that we're referring to there?
Can we clarify it better?
I think we need to rewrite this, yeah.
Because that, that came up, that came up once before when we only had three people present. The executive session in that case was a performance evaluation for the municipal judge, so we weren't conducting any secret city business, just for full disclosure. And I was the mayor at the time, and I felt uncomfortable going into executive session with only three people present because I was unclear, so we didn't have it. So I just would like, I just feel like, and that was the answer that I, that we could have gone into executive session if everyone had voted yes. So my question is still, if only two people voted yes. So can, should we, well, first off, let's, as council, let's direct the attorney, do we want, if there's three people present for a meeting, if two of them want to go into executive... into executive session?
I would say no.
I agree with Dave.
Because that's not a majority of council. Well, it...
It is a majority of the quorum.
It's a majority of the quorum, but quorum, I think, for, to enter into executive session, if there's only three people present, it should either be unanimous in order to go into executive session, because that is a majority of council, or if it's only two people that vote to go into executive session, that is not a majority of council.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
And I don't disagree, I would just point out, as part of the discussion, though, when you go into executive session, you can't take any action anyway, so, does the convening of an executive session in and of itself dictate that you need to have three, keeping in mind that you can't take any action while you're there?
I would still say, I think that you should have either all three, I don't think that two people out of five can go into an executive session, even if only three people are present.
But what if, what if the other council members are not present, I'm playing devil's advocate, you need to have some legal advice from your attorney, and you can't go in because one person doesn't want to receive the legal advice? And it may be critical that you receive it, but you don't have the personnel available to do it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with us going into executive session with just three people being there. I think the outcome of voting on that issue becomes the critical point. We would take two votes, back to Dave's point, that's not a quorum of the, that's not the total number of votes we get out of full council, so I think that, that point is one that we need to consider.
You would be able to take action.
Yeah, to do business, regular city council business, if there's only three people, and two vote yes, that passes.
That passes.
That I don't dispute at all. It's only to go into executive session that I'm wondering about.
But how would you...
And having that question actually kind of...
It's interesting, because I think if the, if you were, if three people were in attendance, two people were, one is sick, one's on vacation, so if a council meeting with three people, and someone requests an executive session, because the zoning question before council, or the liquor license question before council, they really have some questions, then I would imagine all three folks would vote to go into executive session for that advice. If going into executive session were used for a sneaky purpose, I want to go into executive session and talk about firing the municipal judge, and then you come out of executive session, I just, I wonder if, if it's for a really, really good reason, like, hey, we need some clarity on the law regarding this liquor license hearing, you're going to get three votes to go into executive session? If you can't get three votes to go into executive session, maybe you shouldn't be going into executive session.
I have some information that may be very helpful to resolve this. Chris, is it on screen?
We talked long enough to give you guys time to do research?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Yeah, so, pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Subsection 4, affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present, so if you have the situation where you have three people, if two people vote to go into executive session, it is proper to go into executive session at that point in time.
So, if we don't establish something on our own, and we follow the state law, that's what the state law would recommend?
That is, that is what would control, correct.
Well, I think that clarifies it and answers it for me.
Yeah, we should follow the state law.
I like that, thank you.
My pleasure.
Should we make any reference to that?
I think we should just make it clear, I think we should just make it clear in our own charter that we are following that, or that we are also doing that, or something like that, so this, we kind of put this question to bed once and for all.
Doing the footnote referencing the statute.
I would leave it up to our attorney to figure out how to make it clear, I think council's given a really clear direction. We want it to be that way, because that's what the state laws.
I wrote a note there, clarify my reference to statute. I will also look at the wording here, and if I can make it better, I certainly will. I think it caused us quite a little debate, and that is a warning sign to me that it could be done better, so, whatever that's worth. Okay?
Great.
Duly noted. Moving on. Okay, Section 4 of Article 2 is about voting and how you vote yes or no on items that come before you. You'll see some of the same title references that I've been doing everywhere in the charter. The main thing here that I'll call your attention was, it used to talk about voice votes only, but really, at our meetings, what we're doing, it's like a voice vote, but it's done electronically, where everyone can see on the screen, yes, yes, no, or whatever the vote count is. And I wanted it to be clear in the charter that that's how we're doing it, so I said, "Each member who is present shall vote electronically," meaning what I just described, "or by voice vote, unless excused by the unanimous consent of the remaining members present." So, more or less just clarifies existing practice. Section 9, you'll see I deleted the word qualified before electors, as I talked about in the very beginning. Also, here's another one that I found a bunch of instances of. There are several places where council isn't preceded by the word city, so I tried to make it city council wherever it seemed appropriate throughout the charter, so that's what you see there.
Sometimes you call them council members, two words, and sometimes you call them counselors. Do you think that those, I use them interchangeably myself, do you think that's sufficient for our charter?
I noticed that, I didn't, it didn't occur to me that it needed to be changed. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but if you feel otherwise, let me know. Okay, moving on, Article 3, elections. Section 1, terms of office. This one, we clarified in part to make it mesh with the changes that I already showed you from, I think it was Article 1, but also, we noticed that some language in here was antiquated, it's going back to the mid 1990s to start the staggering of terms. So, the whole purpose of this is to stagger your terms, so that we don't have, hopefully, a complete turnover of council at any one time. So, that's what you'll see there.
Just make it easier to count, every four years, we update the years.
That was the idea, yeah.
In the 20 years, they can redo it, do it again?
Okay, moving forward. Section 4 is only in there because we deleted a rather extensive editor's note, no changes to the actual charter. Section 7, okay, so this is procedure for elections, and specifically to recall any elective or appointed officer. So, I noticed a grammatical issue in the first line, effect versus affect, I changed that, hopefully I got it right. I deleted qualified before electors. Mr. Reed, did I not get it right?
No.
Oh, okay, you had a look on your face like, oh, my gosh.
Sorry.
You had a strong reaction to that. Okay, moving on then. Replacement of titles for pronouns. I don't care for the word must, I think of like mold, must and mold, so I changed it to shall. That is also, I'll say, consistent with definitions at the end of the charter, where shall is mandatory, may is permissive, it doesn't mention must, I think, and so I wanted to be consistent. Substantive change here would be to the percentage required. It's from 15 to 25 percent. I'm going to let the committee talk here, if you want to, about the numbers.
Sure. The committee looked at what, how many, that 15 percent of the total number of electors voting in the last general election was not a very high threshold for someone to put a recall election in front of voters at a pretty substantial cost to the city. And, we asked the city attorney to look at what other municipalities did, and what their threshold was for a citizen to circulate a petition to recall a city council member, and that was generally more along the lines of 25 percent rather than 15 percent. I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, does anyone have questions, or they want to say, yeah, that makes sense out loud?
Yes, that makes sense. I'll sit with that.
Okay.
And that someone, if they did that, if a citizen circulated a petition, got 25 percent, the city does a special recall election at the city's expense, and that is unsuccessful, the citizen can't go and do the exact same thing again at 25 percent, the threshold is then raised to 50 percent. So, that a citizen can't keep trying to recall elected officials at the city's expense. It is not inexpensive to run a special election, and we avoid them at all costs, but we do allow citizens to circulate a recall petition that would call for a special recall election. We just wanted it to be a slightly higher threshold for the city to bear that expense and go through that process. Okay, everyone's nodding.
Just to clarify, this doesn't mean that if you didn't vote in the last election, that you, if you are a resident of the city and you are a qualified voter, you can sign a petition, correct? You don't have to be a, hey, I voted on the last election, and so I'm qualified.
It's only a number.
Oh, I know, I was just curious, just wanted to make sure that it was clear to the residents of, who are perhaps watching this, that, that anybody that is a resident of the city of Montrose, whether they voted in the last election or not, have the right to sign a petition.
Absolutely, and have the right to vote, and should it get the correct number of signatures, could vote in the recall.
It's otherwise a qualified elector.
Without regard to whether they did participate. Yep, absolutely.
With your permission, then I'll move on. Okay, Article 4 is about franchises, public utilities, and contracts. This is a section you've already seen. I haven't made any changes to it since I presented it to you last time with Ken Feldman. You may recall, I had tacked that on to the end of the discussion that he did with us on the franchise with chart cable. So, I'd be glad to go through it again, but I don't have anything new to say, and you've already seen it. So, I'm going to kind of gloss over that, if that's okay, and keep moving. Article 5, finance appropriations and taxation. I don't know that we mentioned this, but we did have Shaney and Lisa De Piccolo come in for various sections of the charter that concerned them. Shaney was here for this one. We didn't find really any substantive changes to make. What you see here, I just included because I was making the same kind of comprehensive changes I've done throughout the charter. I added the word city in front of council, I talked about the city manager instead of his or her, you can see why this is useful, this is a particularly good example. It doesn't mention the manager at all in that paragraph, it mentions him or her up above in the preamble. So, I'm calling it out again that that's who we're talking about, I think in terms of legal drafting, that's an improvement. So, that's what you'll see there. No substantive change. Moving on. Section 19, limitation on the taxing powers of the city. This is an interesting section, we talked quite a bit about it. We deleted, per the committee's recommendation, the parking meters installed on city-owned property. I don't believe that that is a tax, so we got rid of that language. And then, this last line here was very troublesome to me. I think that it contradicts taper and existing practices. It's very hard to read it. It's not that it's vague, I just, to be blunt, I think it's poorly stated, and it's unnecessary since taper would require an election to raise a tax anyway. So, we're just getting rid of that. It purports to make, to my mind, to make it possible to raise taxes without an election, which is of course illegal, and has not been done here, but deleting it is the easiest way to get rid of the offending language. Any questions there? Hearing none? Moving on. Article 6 was about municipal borrowing and bonding and other such topics. For this section, as a general summary, I ran this one by a different attorney. This was Tom Pelz from Cootec Rock, he's probably the preeminent expert in the state on municipal bonding. He rendered a decision informally to me that our charter was just fine, he didn't recommend any changes, and so I haven't made any substantive changes to this part of the charter. The only reason you've got anything in here is because I was deleting qualified before electors in Section, what is this, pardon me, Section 3, under bonding, and then again, I think in Section 5, we did that three or four times in that very long paragraph. And that's it. Pretty simple. Next up then, Article 7, courts and legal services. We talked a bit about the municipal court. By way of background, I'll say there were some pretty significant changes made to this section in the 2014 amendments. Some of those were at the request, I assume, of staff, I wasn't present for that, and the judge in particular. We didn't change a whole lot of that, but there are changes here, and some are substantive, so we can go through this. So, let's look, Paragraph C, under Section 1, is just the title of the judge, so that's not substantive. D, this one is substantive. We're clarifying there that the judge may appoint one or more assistant municipal judges, and then we put in some language that should be familiar to most folks, with the advice and consent of the city council. Advice and consent is language used in the U.S. Constitution in regard to, well, for instance, judicial appointments. So, I think that would be familiar to most folks. So, this would require that the judge come to council with his, I would assume, recommendation for an appointment of an assistant municipal judge. The rest of that is basically the same, you can see the changes I made. I made mention here, and I do have a note, I guess I can ask this question now, we give a municipal judge authority and responsibility of the court, including the annual budget court personnel and regulations. I don't think that's actually how we're doing that here, and I know we talked about it, this may just be my mistake.
I think we give that...
You want to delete that?
We do want to delete court personnel. The city clerk, who is a full-time employee with the city, is responsible for the court personnel, who are also full-time employees with the city, whereas the municipal judge is a part-time employee, and I think the bill's nodding, so I think the reasoning, right, was that a part-time municipal judge, the job is part-time, should be concerned with judging, doing the role of judge, and not be worried about personnel management. Since they aren't here full-time, they would be not in the best position to approve vacations or verify time limits and stuff, right? Yeah, okay.
So, I deleted that in the copy on, that's on the digital screens.
And is the, does the charter currently have court personnel in the charter? And so, are we, is that a change to remove it?
Believe that it does. Pardon me for a minute, let me get on that page, I don't have the digital one up in front of me because I'm presenting, but... Yep, it's in here, under Section 1D, court personnel.
Okay, so we would be recommending that change to the voters to strike court personnel?
Yep, so, got it.
I think that makes sense.
I agree, that's consistent with my recollection of our discussions. Okay, I'm now on Paragraph E, just scanning through that, and none of that is really substantive until you get to the last sentence, which I did delete. There, it says, "Each judge or assistant judge of the municipal court shall be a resident of the county of Montrose, and should be an attorney-at-law licensed to practice in the state of Colorado." We had a fairly extensive discussion on that. Obviously, we concluded we should delete the residency requirement. We also discussed that this attorney-at-law licensed language was being deleted also. Does anyone want to...
Can you explain the rationale behind deleting that?
Yeah, I will, because we talked about it a lot, that that would be a requirement of the job and the job posting, but would it be in charter language? So, there are some municipalities that use a part-time assistant municipal judge who has extensive knowledge of municipal law, but isn't certified attorney with a current law degree from the state, and this would give council flexibility that, again, in the job posting, council would most likely require that the judge have or obtain, within so many days of being hired, that law degree and that license, not the degree, whatever. Council can do that in the job posting and job review, but it isn't required by charter?
A really good rationale that I think it was you gave at the committee, gave to the committee, was that you might have a retired lawyer who's no longer licensed, something like that, that kind of scenario would be covered by this. Sorry to interrupt, I just...
No, I just, does that explanation make sense, why we would still most likely have this in a job requirement and the job description when we're hiring?
And another aspect of the rationalization of that is that if we hired someone who was licensed out of state, and we wanted to give them a time, an opportunity to become licensed in the state, we could still hire them for a position with a job requirement, but that way, they're not barred from holding that position by the charter.
And they wouldn't be in violation of the charter for the brief time they practiced while they were obtaining the license.
Correct.
Exactly. And then we didn't really talk about the residency piece, but it was, you might have a perfect candidate who resided in Yarra County, lived in Ridgeway, and was going to be a fantastic candidate. Council could decide during the hiring process whether that was important to them or not, but the charter wouldn't preclude it.
And I think we've actually had people that expressed interest in those jobs that were unable to become an assistant municipal judge for that reason. There aren't a great many lawyers in the area, or more than there used to be, but it's sometimes still hard to find lawyers to fill positions like that. Okay, I had a note here that's no longer applicable, you all clarified it just a few minutes ago, but under F, it talks about salary... You all clarified it just a few minutes ago, but under F, it talks about salary compensation not dependent on the outcome of matters, decided by the judge, and to be fixed by resolution of the council. This does not conflict with what we said above, because I deleted the judge's authority over court personnel. I just noticed there was a conflict there. They're no longer as with deletion of the words court personnel as part of the judge's purview. So I'm deleting that note from my copy. And G is only included because I deleted qualified in front of the word electors. And give me just a minute here, I'm going to try and catch up with you. Okay, moving on. Section two is the city attorney's section. We made some changes in language here. There was also some discussion about it. Of course, this is a section that deals with my department. I don't know if the committee wants to take this or if you want me to do it.
I'll take it if it sounds like you'd be more comfortable that way, but the, that we felt like the city attorney and the city attorney's department, the legal department, was responsible to council such that the city manager couldn't go in and fire an assistant city attorney. That branch, so to speak, of our government, because the city attorney's a direct report to council, that their department should be somewhat autonomous and from the city managers managing the rest of the city, but that, and I think this is important, but the city attorney shall have authority to hire, promote, demote, transfer, discipline, or discharge in accordance with the provisions of the municipal court, the charter, and the city personnel policies. So the city attorney still has to follow our personnel policies. The city attorney can't just say, oh, you get more vacation because I feel like it, and I'm going to increase your salary because I feel like it, and you don't have to work only, you know.
You will lose oxygen.
So that there was some independence to our attorney's office, but that they still had to follow our basic personnel guidelines. I'm seeing nodding. Does that mean that I explained it okay and you're good with that? Okay, because I think there was some, there was some question about that. We talked about it pretty extensively. Okay.
Moving forward. Section B there, I added the word city before council, as you've seen many times, and then I also changed it from a resolution to a motion for compensation for the city attorney. I'm not aware of any time in my experience at the city where we actually passed a written resolution regarding city attorney's salary and whatnot. I don't think that we've ever done that, at least not in the last 20 years. It's by motion.
It's by motion.
Counsel has agreed on it, but it's not quite as formalistic as the charter would have it.
We do that for all three of the direct reports to council, so is that language consistent with the city manager's compensation and the municipal judge's compensation? Can we?
I believe it is, but we need to look and make sure while it's.
Okay, we can come back. I'll write that down.
Perhaps in front of mine. I was just thinking that. Okay, thank you for making a note on that. We'll pay attention to it as we go through. Section three is about the oaths of office. Already heard me discuss the rationale behind this. This one was put into the charter in 2014, the amendment, so it is in the existing charter now. It was a duplicate of the one you saw up above, and it included just all the different people who should be getting an oath, except for the elected officials. You'll notice that isn't part of this paragraph. What I did is just to narrow it down to the departments discussed in this part of the charter, which is city attorney and the judge, the municipal court. So those are still required to have an oath, but we'll have a separate section for the administrative folks down in the next article. Okay, if you're ready, we'll move to Article eight, administrative supervision in departments. This is the city manager's section. A lot of these are just replacement of title for pronouns and also adding the word city in front of council. I think that's all pretty self-explanatory. Section two, absence of city manager. Here again, it's the same kind of thing. Don't see anything of real substance there. Section three, powers and duties. You're going to see a lot of the same kind of theme going through here. I'm just replacing titles, adding the word city in front of council, trying to be consistent with terminology throughout the charter. Section five, same thing. And then you get the oath of office. I added a new, this is an entirely new, section nine, and here you'll notice it doesn't include elected officials or the city attorneys or the judges. This is just administrative folks. So we've got city manager, we added deputy city manager, and we still include assistant city manager in case we ever have one of those again, police chief, police officers, they all take an oath too, just as they always have. We just broke it out into sections. Folks, if you don't mind, I'm thinking, I'd really like to look and see here if we say compensation for city manager is done by resolution or if we need to change that.
So it's different in this one where, because it says, such a point shall be without definite term, salary to be fixed by city council, doesn't give the method.
Excellent.
Which is different.
That works.
Yeah, no need to change that.
No need to change that.
What about with the judge, while we're on the topic? If you don't mind, let's do a go back. I like to do things while I'm thinking of them, because I'm afraid I'll forget if I don't.
We said that.
We talked about it. City council, at its pleasure, may upon a vote of the entire city council, remove the judge. Okay, that's not yet. I thought it did, I could swing it to.
By resolution.
Or it was on F.
Yeah, F.
So let's change it by motion, if it says by resolution.
Yes, let me get back up there to F. Thank you for that. Okay, and be fixed by, I'm going to say motion, instead of, I'm just replacing resolution with motion.
Yep, because that's how we do it, and that's consistent with setting the salary for the city attorney as well.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to make a note in this copy too, I'm trying to keep track of this. Okay, perfect. All right, if you all are ready, we'll keep moving. Thanks for the go back, I appreciate it. So I think we were just talking about council not to interfere, and then the oath of office. I think we're done with city manager then with that. Moving on then, Article nine, initiative and referendum. Okay, here you will see, I corrected a couple of typos in that section three paragraph, and I also deleted qualified in front of electors, added the word city in front of council. I don't think any of that changes anything, except just to clarify. Section five, adequacy and amendment of petitions. We changed from 10 to 14 days here. The reason for that change, I think throughout the state statutes in the last several years, there has been an initiative stemming from the legislature itself to enact something called the rule of seven, and that was simply to make all deadlines in state statute multiple of the number seven, so a week. When I was on the bench, I found that to be very helpful in trying to compute deadlines. You're having to do some kind of math, which is not my strong suit. Having a multiple of seven to go by was really easy, and also in setting deadlines in court, it's really easy. So I would give things like a 21-day deadline, things like that, rather than 10, which used to be common, or things like 30. So anyway.
And in this case, the city clerk did ask for a little more time to count and verify signatures, given that 10 days, if it was encompassed by weekends, would really, could amount to four working days, and that would not be sufficient time for the clerk and the clerk's staff to count and verify signatures, and so.
Lisa, does this work for you?
Yes, I think it works.
Okay, sure. Okay, with that explanation then, I'm going to keep moving. Section six, here we have just instances of the words qualified electors, so you see, I did the same thing with that by deleting them. Article 10, I mentioned this one at the very beginning of my spiel here today. You'll see where we do the definition of elector. It used to say elector and qualified elector, and then it gave him the same definition. So I think we're improving the charter just by getting rid of the qualified elector language, because it meant the same thing as just plain old elector by itself. So I also did do a substantive change here. We're talking about what elector means in this section, so I do think it's important. Means any person who, under the statutes of the state of Colorado, is entitled to vote for candidates for a municipal office, and this said within municipalities or in municipalities within the state of Colorado. I thought that was really weird, because doesn't that mean anyone who can vote in Colorado? I don't think that's right. We don't want people, say, from Denver voting in our local elections. I don't think anyone contemplates that. So I changed it. I deleted the words in municipalities within the state of Colorado, and I'm just saying within the city of Montrose, because those are our voters. Any questions?
Okay, well done. It's noon. So those are the suggested changes from the Charter Review Committee that council, and I know we put a pin in once, aside from that, these would be what council would say, hey, voters, these are the changes we are suggesting get made to the charter. Ultimately, voters, it would take your affirmative vote and the majority to approve these. And that's what we would be doing. We aren't deciding anything today. We don't take votes in work session, but we would be getting behind this. Lisa's office would do a lot of work, combined with our city attorney, to put forth this information to voters and say, hey, here's what the suggested changes are for your vote in April. Everyone clear on that's what we're doing, and that we've got time, but we need to, like, there's a process and a calendar that Lisa does a great job of keeping track of, so we need to, I think, probably vote on this twice, that this is the recommended language, and then we have to submit it, and then it has to go, like, there's a process. So we can't just on the end of March decide we want something on April ballot, and that's why we're talking about it now. That being said, we gave ourselves time so we can figure out what to do when we're not all on the same page. So I don't think we're going to fix, we're going to resolve that today. We have time to figure out what to do about that, so that we can either all be on the same page, and if not, do we just vote, and then we move forward with a majority vote on the recommendation changes. So I think we're done with what we wanted to do today.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if you wish, I know we're out of time. So do you want me to just bring this back with the changes? We made a couple of minor ones here for another consideration, another round, and you could use that as your opportunity to talk with Ed and decide what to do.
I think they were so minor, I don't see your reason to bring it back. I think we get ready to go to vote with it, we'll have that information anyway.
Yeah, I think so. I think that probably can be our plan. I'll talk to you more.
Okay, then my next step is to create an ordinance with these changes, but I still don't know about.
I know, right? I'm still not sure what we do about that. I don't know, maybe that's just something that we won't all agree on. It'd be nice to have it unanimous, but if not, I don't know. Let's all just think about that.
We can draft the ordinance, you're going to bring it back to work session follow and all that process.
What?
That would make sense, so we can just do it then.
Because you're going to have to adopt an ordinance to put it on the ballot.
Right.
So normally, maybe we bring that ordinance to work session, so you'll have an opportunity to talk about it again at that work session.
Okay, we can do that. We left ourselves plenty of time, so we might as well do it that way.
Sure. Okay. Then you'll see this again in another work session.
Okay.
In a form of an ordinance.
Correct.
In a form of an ordinance. And then Bill, was there something else that you wanted to bring under general city?
I've got another.
Oh, you've got another thing, but was there something, as I'm looking at the clock, was there something else we were going to talk about today?
Yes, just quickly, we wanted, we had the recent CML outreach meeting down in Delta, and it was brought up at that meeting about getting Representative Boebert's office to write a letter of support to purchase a railroad right away, and we've talked about it since that time with staff, and we need clarification to make sure all of council wants to move forward in that direction. We have some hesitancy just because of the timing of it. We don't think it's a good time to go get a railroad property appraisal. It's going to be inflated. So what we would ask is if council would be okay with us putting that idea on hold, but still keeping in mind that Representative Boebert's office would help us and be supportive at whatever time is appropriate to go and do another railroad appraisal and approach the railroad, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we should not, we should put that aside for right now.
I think the intent of that whole thing, that whole conversation was to find out about the possibility of it, not to pursue it definitely right now.
Great, we just need a clarification on that. Thank you.
Okay, and then discussion regarding budget adoption timeline.
Okay, well, very briefly then, we had talked about this at a staff level, and I don't see any reason why the budget schedule that city staff's already proposed to you wouldn't work. I double-checked the charter to make sure that we can give the required notices and do the publishing in time for first reading on November 2nd, and then second reading one week later on November 14th.
Perfect, and I think this is coming up because we talked about our calendars, Shaney talked about what she needed, and the city attorney said, hey, can I just make sure that what you guys are proposing checks all of your legal boxes and is legally following our rules, and you're saying it does.
It does.
It's close.
Yeah, it's actually just fine. The budgetary section of the charter requires five days' notice, whereas the general, you know, passage of an ordinance section of the charter requires one week between a first and a second reading. So by either section, you're fine. I don't think we have a legal issue with the schedule. The reason I'm bringing this up today is because the charter says, "An ordinance may be published in the newspaper, either by summary, in title, or in full," and then this is the emphasis, "as the council may determine." And I thought, well, since the budget's so important, I probably ought to get you all to determine that. I don't think we need an ordinance or anything overly formalistic, but if, in a public meeting like right now, if you're willing to tell us that this is how you want to do it, then I think we have your determination and we'll march on.
I think it is, and because we talked about it now, but we don't have that budget calendar in front of us, can we please add that to the, where would someone listening to this find our calendar for the budget adoption?
I'm looking at Lisa, hoping that she can answer that easily.
I don't know that we have the actual calendar, but I'll check the change.
Let's just make that really easy.
Is this what we're looking at?
I can't see that.
It says here, budget adoption schedule, November 7th, first reading, November 14th, second reading, December 5th, first reading, supplemental, and December 19th, as the second reading, but I believe we moved the second reading.
Yeah, I think we changed that.
What if we?
We're probably not going to, I think we've agreed not, they have a meeting on the 19th. Yeah, I believe I wrote down any of the details.
I think that's what I intended, that's what we could discuss.
Calendar. Now, I want you to know what is this calendar we're saying we like. I mean, I think we all agreed to it last work session.
Yeah, I think we could do a news slash LRB on the website, and then we can put out a press release too, just, and then at that same time, we can announce the open